Anybody hear us?
Yes.
All right, good, thank you.
Yeah, please say it for, for Lawrence.
That announcement, and we'll go to somebody.
This is a quick reminder, if you're on the phone, please dial star nine to raise your hand, and to unmute and mute yourself, dial star six. Anyone else that's on the Zoom, using the Zoom app, you can just use the hand raise button.
Ready to go?
Ready.
All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled hanging board meeting for the Portsmouth for Wednesday, October 14th, 2020. First item on the agenda already changes in the agenda. There are none, Slawinski says there are none, so we're moving on. Next item on our agenda is the minutes from the last meeting. There really shouldn't be a big discussion since this is the quickest meeting I think we've ever had. We didn't accomplish very much. So what's the pleasure of the board on the minutes? We have to pick it both by name, so Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mr. Sivitz?
Yes.
Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Garceau? Mr. Garceau? Back to him. Ms. Wilson?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can, you approved the minutes. Oh, you weren't there.
No, I just couldn't figure if I, you could hear me or not.
We can hear you, so she should be listed as not being present at the last meeting and refusing herself on this. Mr. Palladi, are you there?
Yes.
How do you vote on the minutes?
Yes.
All right, so the, everybody said aye, so there are no nays. The minutes are adopted. All right, next item on the agenda is the McCory Lane LLC property. This is formerly Ferrera Farms located at the intersection of Ferrera Avenue and Pleasant View Avenue, AP 48, Lot 35, and this is down for the final plan review. Is counsel there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman Jay Lynch from Moore-Virginia Lynch, representing the applicant. I also have, hopefully, that's on the meeting, is Joe Dohamel from Dupree Engineering, and John Kent, who is the developer. We think we were back in front of you probably, I think, in August for preliminary plan approval. It was either July or August, I can't recall right now. And the board gave us a preliminary plan approval. In the meantime, we've had meetings with the administration in going over the plan, and I think we've addressed all of the concerns that the administration had concerning the development. There is one outstanding issue that I've had discussions with Mr. Gavin about, and that concerns the connection between the Wind Rock subdivision and our proposed subdivision. I think the town has taken the position that there is no authority to require Wind Rock to extend its roadway to our boundary. That's the position that the administration is going to take. I think that might be inconsistent with the decision that this board, when it approved its preliminary, I'm sorry, final plan approval for the Wind Rock subdivision, which discussed that roadway being developed in the event our subject lot, wherever, fully developed. Be that as it may, you know, my client is prepared to do what is necessary to connect the two developments together. We've had Mr., you know, Mr. Whitehead has given us an indication of what he's looking for. Mr. Gavin has also passed those requests along to me, and my client is begrudgingly willing to do what work is necessary to connect these two subdivisions. I do have, Joe, are you on the line? Joe Dohamel?
They have to be allowed in, hang up.
Okay.
Ask now.
Joe, are you there? Can you tell if he's on the, on the call, Mr. Chairman?
Say it again.
Can you tell if he's on the, on the call?
He's there, it's just hooking him up, yeah.
Okay.
There, he should be right now.
Joe, are you, are you there?
He's muted himself.
Oh, Joe, if you can unmute yourself.
There he goes, I thought, I thought you were him.
Yeah, Joe, if you can, there we go. Hey, Joe.
Can you hear me?
Barely, you have to speak up.
Joe, are you there?
He's there, he's just not coming in.
I tried to call him and have him try to re-
His audio, something wrong with his audio. It is, it's, I can't hear that right now.
I heard a very, very brief, can you hear me, but it was very faint, yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like America Online used to.
Yeah, well, maybe he can fix that while we're moving on to something else. Well, somebody, somebody should call him on his cellphone and try to walk me through the technical issue.
Let me see if I can, if I can get him. Hey, John, do you have Joe's cellphone? I feel like I'm the only man left on the face of the earth.
Can you guys hear me?
There we go, yes, I can now.
Sorry, I, sorry about that.
Not a problem.
So, I heard your opening statement, Jay, and after that, you asked if I was on the line. So I'm Joe Dohamel from Dupree Engineering.
Joe, if you can just go over to the, to the board, what's transpired with this plan since we had our meeting on the preliminary plan approval?
From the preliminary plan approval, we've, we've coordinated work and addressed concerns and comments from Director Brian Woodhead. We addressed Resto's comments, returned revised plans to him in his office for review. Among, among the comments was including extending the water main from, actually, if I could share my screen, that'd be great, from our proposed road to north to the Wind Rock Road. That was one of the considerations we made and we addressed. In addition, we also included a full extension of the roadway to the Wind Rock property. A full public right-of-way, if you will, pavement width and, and construction to their site to tie into their existing 50-foot easement. That is the main, the main difference from the preliminary plan meeting and today's plans or what we see on the site. If you could actually maybe go to the next page, who's controlling the plans, the site plan, you would see these improvements.
Keep your voice up, please.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Keep your voice up.
Okay. Like I was mentioning, mentioning on the, on the plan, we show a connection into the Wind Rock property that's between Lot 11 and Lot 10.
Lot 10 and Lot 11.
Yes. And that, that's a summary of, of the project since, since the last time the board have seen it. We've, we've coordinated further water review with the Portsmouth Fire Water District. They've reviewed the plans, they're, they've seen the plans for the extension of the water main into Wind Rock, and we're pending, we're pending approval for that, for that installation.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a text from John Kent. Let him into the meeting.
Hang on.
Thank you.
Does anybody have a question of this way?
I do, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry?
Ed, Ed Lopes here, I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Ed, Mr. Lopes.
So as I, as I look at the plan that you displayed, and it appears that you've got the stub road now going to the edge of the property line, I thank you for that. This is probably more of a question for Attorney Lynch and the solicitor. Does that stub now become a de facto town road? Or is it maintained as part of the driveway for lots 11? Is it part of the homeowners association? What, what actually happens to it? If it just ends at the property line?
Well, Mr. Lopes, the, Mr. Woodhead is requested or demanded that we extend that roadway through into the Wind Rock subdivision, that they want the Wind Rock subdivision connected into our subdivision. So when that roadway is complete, it will be a, a public, a public road.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you. Just wasn't clear on the plan, etc.
Does anybody else have a question of this way?
I could just add something, I think one of the things, Kevin Gavin, Town Solicitor, I think one of the things DPW Director Woodhead is, was looking for would be that the, if the final plan is approved, that it be subject to amending the plan to show the extension of the road being built all the way to connect with the road in the Wind Rock subdivision. I think Brian's on here, you can correct me if I'm misstating that.
This is Jay Lynch, yeah, we have no objection to doing that. The issue that we have is, you know, I don't know how we amend the, the Wind Rock plan that has been approved and recorded, and on that plan, it's only referenced as, as an easement for emergency access. We're more than happy to revise our plan to provide for that stub road to be a public, a public right-of-way.
Can't do more than that, sir.
Excuse me?
Can't do more than that.
That's right.
Don't control their development.
And Mr., and Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, you know, before we delve too far into Wind Rock subdivision and any alleged rights or obligations of that developer, I think we ought to keep in mind that this, this agenda item is for final approval of, of this Ferrera Farms, McCory.
That's what I just said, Mr. Gavin.
I didn't hear you when you say that, okay. And, and if we were going to get more into that, we would be, have to be on a separate agenda.
I understand and agree with you completely.
Yeah.
But the, the two do intersect.
Correct.
Particularly on this issue, so we have to discuss at least that portion.
Sure, certainly, to a certain extent, but if we're going to get too far, we, we should, I think Wind Rock should be notified and should be on the agenda so they can pick them themselves.
Mr. Lynch, you want to proceed? Somebody else?
No, that, that's, that's all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, we do have some issues when we get to the bond. If you get to the bond, I can have, you know, Mr. Kent to give his estimates that he's received for the road improvements. But I don't know if you have any more questions on the, on the design or even on the connection between the two subdivisions.
Mr. Chairman Seth Plot here, my quick question. I see that you've added a stop sign and stop bar at the intersection with Pleasant View. I think that's going to make a big difference for safety. Is there any traffic signage going to be installed at the intersection with Wind Rock? I don't know that you necessarily need it, I think that would be a pretty low volume. But then again, you never know with cut-through driving through there, you know?
Yeah, I don't think we've explored that, you know, putting traffic signals at the, the connection between the two.
I just meant a stop sign, not a, not a traffic signal, maybe a stop sign, but.
We can, if the board desires us to put one, we can, we can put up a stop sign.
Yeah, we can put a, we could put a stop sign at the new stub location and the intersection into our site. It would be likely needed that a stop sign and stop bar would be needed on the Wind Rock property side. But really, that road would be a continuous road from site to site, so at the property line or interface when, when it be needed.
Anybody else have any questions?
Plan Board Chair, can you hear me?
Who is that, who is this, please?
Oh, this is Brian Woodhead, Director of Public Works.
Aye, Mr. Woodhead, please.
I just want to thank Dupree Engineering, after our meeting that we had with them and everyone from Ferrera Farms, they addressed all our concerns, especially with the fire department. They had a couple of concerns. One was the entrance from Pleasant View onto Ferrera Farms. They widened that little intersection a little wider for the fire trucks. And then the last concern, like Mr. Lynch was saying, was the connection from Ferrera Farms to Wind Rock subdivision. The fire department and public works, we want that road connected for a second means of egress. So that, we would like to request the planning board that, that be approved. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? I have, I have, I think, one, or actually two. The first is to Mr. Lynch. You have an estimate on the bond that's dated 9/29/2020, and we have a letter from Mr. Woodhead dated September 29th, 2020. Are you making that part of the record?
I haven't seen, I haven't seen Mr. Woodhead's letter, but I think, I know that Dupree did submit the estimate to, to Mr. Woodhead, so I assume that that's what that letter is referencing.
It's in reference to a number of issues, most of which have been taken care of. I just do have one question on the first item on his agenda, which talks about utility letters regarding the installation of all of the utilities. Is, is that stuff been obtained yet, or is that still in advance?
Joe, can you answer that?
Utility letters, we are coordinating the final pieces. We've addressed the water department's concerns, the main one being the water extension from our site into Wind Rock and other, you know, fire department, you know, including additional fire hydrants, so we suspect that's coming as part of the final, final plan revision of this and approval. The other, the other, the other utility companies, we, the contractor and owner, John Kent, would request, you know, National Grid Electric and, and/or Gas if it was needed, but no, actually, there's no gas in this area, so Verizon also is another. Cable is another pending one that would be needed. But the main one is the water, water department, and that's, that's in the works.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? All right, we're going to, oh, I'm sorry. All right, we're going to open this up to the general public. Are there, is there anybody in the general public that we should speak to?
If anyone, that's in the audience that would like to make a comment, please raise your hands.
Give it another call. Anyone in the public who would address this petition? All right, hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
I can make a motion to provide final plan approval for the 18-watt subdivision with a couple of contingent conditions, that being what we just discussed. The utility, contingent on the utility providers, I guess, in the fire department signing off on the plan prior to structure, I'd say mobilization per construction. And contingent on the amendment, amendment to the plan showing benching through the Wind Rock upper public right-of-way.
Between lots 10 and 11 going on the Wind Rock circuit.
Right, and then entering, as the chair already said, entering the DPW letter into the record and the letter from Dupree Engineering.
There are seconds, I will second it. Is there any discussion among members of the board? Anybody wish to make any comments?
Yeah.
Was that yes, Dave?
Mr. Chairman, could I interject?
Yes.
We just received some of the customary documentation that, oh, I'm sorry, am I, no. Okay, it also should be conditioned, we've just, we're just receiving some of the documentation. We, as to the deed restrictions, we have not received homeowners association bylaws. I just received a first draft of a road bond and, and also the easement and maintenance agreement concerning the drainage.
If we approve this, we're going to be talking about the road bond next.
Right, what you're saying should be conditioned, I would suggest it be conditioned upon review and approval of those documents.
All right, so that's up to you, are you willing to second amendment? Are you going to amend it?
I would add that to the, do you have all that, Dave?
No, what is, what are, what are the list of documents Attorney Gavin is referring to? Homeowners Association documents?
Yes, road bond, form of road bond.
Okay.
Easement, maintenance agreement, easement for the wastewater and drainage structures. And.
I think it should be stormwater drainage structure.
Right, yes.
Also the water treatment system too, because they're pumping this uphill, right?
That's correct, that will be included as well.
Okay.
All right, did you get that, Dave?
Yes, I did.
All right, you guys agree with that?
I agree.
Motion is seconded. Anybody else have anything to say, comments, changes, modifications? Okay. If not, I will call the roll. Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mr. Lopes?
Yay.
Sivitz?
Yes.
Mr. Garceau? Now, what happened to Dave? Come back, Dave. Mr. Palladi?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Chair votes yea. Mr. Garceau?
Say it again, David. I can see him saying yes with a thumbs up.
Can you give us a thumbs up, Dave? That's, that's close enough. As long as it's that figure, Dave. I think we can accept that, we can accept that as a, all right, it's a unanimous decision, there are no nays. The petition is granted. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, wait, one thing, one more thing, we've got to.
Yep.
We usually rely on Mr. Lopes for this. I know, he's right there, that's why I put him on the spot.
Mr. Chair, I know that if I could be heard, I know originally, this is Jay Lynch. I know initially, we submitted some estimates to the town, 1.2 million for road construction, septic, et cetera. We've gone through that, and I think we've pared it down to about $850,000 relating to road construction and trees. So if, we'd request that the, the board set bond at $850,000, if that's acceptable.
Document I have is the 1.2.
That's correct, and that includes other items for septic on the properties as well. And I know, you know, my client has gone over with the contractor. We just asked that if, you know, if you want to give consideration to reducing it to the 850,000, we think that that's more than enough to, to deal with the road improvements. But, Mr. Board, I'll leave it up to your discretion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Lopes?
Ed Lopes here. Yeah, I, I, I went through the estimate as well, and it does include the, the water installation pieces and parts, which are going to have its own separate road bond from the water department. So I think Mr. Lynch's discussion is, is correct. An 850, 850K for the roadway and the trees, I, I feel is, is an adequate road bond.
That's your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
You making that a motion?
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
There are seconds, I will second it. Get that, Dave? Dave, you have everything?
I got it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion on the size of the bond? You know, I'll call for a vote. Mr. Harding, yay. Lopes?
Yay. Yay.
Sivitz?
Aye.
Mr. Garceau? Having fun with Dave?
Yeah.
There he is, thanks, Dave. Mr. Palladi?
Yay.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
The chair votes approval as well, so it's unanimous, so. Okay, Mr. Lynch, you and your client, good luck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So item number three is off, we're moving on to item number four, which is the complete streets ordinance. So we've gotten a package from you, Michael. Gary, but it's got your name all over it. Who is going to make the presentation, is it going to be you, or is it going to be?
Gary.
All right.
Crosby? Good evening, Mr. Chairman. We are here tonight to, this is Gary Crosby, Town Planner. We are here tonight to hear comments from the board on a working draft of a complete streets ordinance. So let me give you a little bit of a timeline about how we got here. In September of 2019, the town council passed a resolution, the relevant section of which reads, "Be it further resolved that the Portsmouth Planning Department work with local and regional resources to draft green and complete streets ordinances that require all public, private projects, our public and private projects, roads, driveways, and parking areas in the town of Portsmouth to construct to green and complete street standards for implementation." for implementation in Portsmouth in 2020." Those were my marching orders. I produced a working draft and presented it to the town council in May of 2020. And the agenda item read, "Receive, Discuss and Determine the Next Steps" for this working draft. They passed a motion to schedule a public workshop, which they in turn held in September 2020. There was a short presentation by me, very much like the one I'm giving you now, on the nuts and bolts of the working draft. And a, a presentation by Grow Smart Rhode Island, which you will see tonight, perhaps with a little bit of changes, but I don't think so. And at that, at that workshop, the town council voted to send the working draft to you for review and comment. Now, this is not yet an advisory opinion. The, the, the draft ordinance, the working draft ordinance was not presented to the council for public hearing for them to adopt, in which case they would have to send it to you for an advisory opinion. So we're not at that stage yet. We're just here to listen, to have you review and comment on the, the working draft. I sent it to you in September. What you have, what your chairman referred to is a copy of the working draft, some accident data that Chief Peters and I compiled some time ago, which would be relevant to this situation and the Grow Smart presentation. So that's what, that's what brings us here tonight. A little bit about how I put this working draft together. My primary guidance was a workbook published, a Complete Streets Local Policy Workbook, published by Grow Smart, Smart Growth America and the National Complete Streets Coalition. It was very, very well-developed workbook, which was a critical piece of guidance for me. It, it outlined a series of elements and sample language to incorporate into complete streets policies and ordinances. And the second was examples from around the country. I found, I don't know, five or six, seven, eight examples of, of complete streets policies and, and ordinances adopted by towns. And I, I, I really tried to keep my, my selection set for this, these examples to towns that, that seemed similar in both demographic and geographic condition, similar to ours. It doesn't make any sense to, to use a complete streets policy or ordinance from New York City to deal with what we're, to use what we're here. So I, I, I had, I had a good, I got a pretty good representative example of some ordinances and so forth around the country. And then, of course, there is Rhode Island state law, Rhode Island, Chapter 2416, the Safe Access to Public Roads statute, that in their findings, and I'll read, I'll read a relevant section of their findings to you. For all state and local transportation projects that are eligible for both federal and state funding and are subject to Department of Transportation oversight. Now, this, these are, these are regulations that DOT has to abide by for all of their roads. Rhode Island must provide for a consideration of safe travel by all users of the road network, including motorists, pedestrians, bicyclists and public transportation users, regardless of age or ability, through the use of complete streets design features for safe travel in the planning, design and construction of new or reconstructed facilities, but not including resurfacing or other maintenance level projects. So the, the idea, the, 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 the core idea of the state is to, the state law is to make their roads and, and, and the core idea of this ordinance is to make our roads safe for all users and not just vehicles. So, and then, so then I, I, I took all that and translated it into the ordinance language, which you see here, which you have there. There are seven sections, I think. Section one and two, taken together, express a purpose for the ordinance and a complete streets policy statement. The policy statement reads, "Is the policy of the town of Portsmouth that the Department of Public Works shall, to the maximum extent possible, incorporate complete streets infrastructure into all municipal roadway projects, approach every roadway project as an opportunity to improve municipal roadways for all users and work in coordination with other departments, agencies and jurisdictions to achieve complete streets." Section two, or section three is a definitions section, which is, which is fairly, which is standard for the ordinance construction that we follow. Section four is a section titled applicability. And this is important, this is an important piece of the, of the working language. It says that "The provisions of this ordinance shall apply to all roadways in the town of Portsmouth." And there is addition, a definition of what a roadway means, and it basically means all of the, the, everything within the right of way, as well as bridges, tunnels, stormwater construct, infrastructure and so forth. The second app, the piece of the applicability piece is, "The provisions of this ordinance shall not apply to any private or federally owned roads in the town of Portsmouth." And the third is, "The provisions of this ordinance shall not apply to public rights of way owned and maintained by the state of Rhode Island." And there is a, I, I made a, a definitive list. I put it, as you can see, in the draft of all of the ta, the state roads that this ordinance does not apply to. The next section is the implementation section, and this is basically the various steps that the town is required to take to implement this ordinance. And the next section, section six, is equally important here. This, this section has entitled exceptions. And, "Subject to the approval of the Director of Public Works, complete streets infrastructure are not required to be provided when," and several of these, excuse me, several of these come right straight out of state law, but, or mimic state law, but basically, they say, they say that "Complete streets infrastructure is not required when establishment would be contrary to public safety." When, section B, "The existing right of way is constrained in a matter that inhibits the installation of cost-effective complete streets." And this really, this, this does come out of state law and it really sort of addresses the notion that, you know, if it's going to be just, if we're gonna have to be doing some taking of land or burying of, of utilities or things that are just really expensive, we need to be able to exempt that from, as a cost-effective completes the streets infrastructure. The, the next section is, "There is a demonstrated lack of need, as determined by factors, including but not limited to land use current, et cetera, et cetera." Next, the routine, "Complete streets infrastructure are exemption, are exempted when routine maintenance of the transportation network is performed that does not change the roadway geometry or operations." And that, this includes repaving, striping, sweeping, pothole filling, et cetera, et cetera. And then the last is implementing complete street standards, it's, are exempt in a roadway project, which would create a short section of improvements with problematic transitions on either end and are unlikely to follow, be followed by similar improvements at either end, resulting in little progress on implementing a complete streets network. The idea here is that, that we're, we're not really implementing this ordinance by just doing little bits and pieces everywhere that don't, that don't contribute to completing a, a complete streets network over time. The last, and I, I put the, I, the, the accident data that I sent to you, I asked Chief Peters to compile this. This is, I asked him about accidents or incidents involving pedestrians, bicyclists and vehicles over the last 20 years, and he came back with a list. There are a total of 22 incidents over the last 20 years. Two of them do not take place on public, on town roads. And so there is a total of 20 incidents over 20 years. I'll leave that for you to, 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 to take into your, your review of this about demonstrated lack of need. The last, the next section is the design standards. You will note that in section, to, section three, in the definition section, there is a definition of complete streets infrastructure. And there's quite a long list of, of, of complete streets infrastructure, our physical roadway features, bicycle lanes, automobile lanes, paved shoulders, curbs, ramps, bulbous, crosswalks, signage, street furniture, bicycle parking facilities, et cetera, et cetera. And all of these have, there are standards for them to be built to. And that, that this section refers to those standards. And then lastly, there is a section on data collection and performance standards. We need to be able to develop and collect data that tells us how well, whatever implementation, whatever implementing infrastructure, complete streets infrastructure that we implement, is it working? Performance standards with measurable benchmarks, you know, how many, how many crosswalks have we installed? How many linear miles of, we, we have to develop a list of performance standards for, for all of this. And then those, the next section, those, those performance measures should be used to identify improvement projects to be included in the town's five-year and capital improvement plan. We need to get, we need to get that, this, if we pass this ordinance, we need to get it into the capital improvement line items in the capital improvement plan that, excuse me, one sec. Yep. Land, then calling on the landline, which I didn't think to turn off. And then lastly, "The town shall establish procedures to allow full participation in policy and budgetary decisions about complete streets infrastructure projects." So that's, that's basically the nuts and bolts of this working draft. You will now hear, and, and I'm certainly, I, well, I am available to, to take your comments and deliver them back to the town council. I understand now, the next piece of the agenda is we will hear, we will see that same presentation by Grow Smart Rhode Island that was given to the town council back in, in September. So, take it away, CJ.
How long is this, by the way?
15 minutes?
Thanks, CJ. I can make it quick. I can make it. If I could, could I share my screen? I can. Okay.
To be able to?
Yeah, great. Okay. Guys seeing that okay?
Please introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is CJ Oprahthouser. I am the Director of Training and Placemaking at Grow Smart Rhode Island.
Good for you.
All right. So thanks, thanks to you all for having me. I'll try to make this quick. This is simply to give you a kind of a quick and good understanding of what complete streets really means and what it might end up looking like in, in your community in Portsmouth. So, um, what are complete streets? Simply, complete streets are streets that are for everyone, no matter who they are or how they travel. And I know some of that language is already kind of in the ordinance and it was in the state law. But a, a complete street is one that safely accommodates every single person that's using it. So that's going to include all users, all modes, whether you're walking, biking, in a wheelchair, you know, in a scooter, whatever, motorcycle, and all abilities. And, you know, I think it needs to be said too, that Rhode Island is aging very rapidly, even compared to other states in the US. And so, you know, a lot of communities that are approaching complete streets are doing so to safely accommodate, you know, older citizens who don't get around as quickly or as easily as, you know, someone younger like me. And of course, it should also be noted that it only takes one incident for someone like me to not be able to move around as easily anyway. So that's kind of a very important, I think, baseline component. I think we should build, you know, a street is complete when it accommodates folks that have mobility challenges. And a complete street is one that is all at once safe, meaning, you know, the risk of crash is very low. Comfortable, meaning your kind of perceived risk of crash is low and that you feel comfortable moving around it. And it's convenient. And in this case, what convenient really means is, you know, to cross one street this way, I don't have to walk, you know, half a mile down for a crosswalk and then half a mile back. And if I'm in a wheelchair, that there's a curb ramp for me, so that, you know, kind of provides more opportunities to get up on the sidewalk and I don't have to make, again, kind of a detour trip. So we know how to do this. I mean, streets historically, you know, very old streets and even in cities like Providence or Newport, wherever, in dense places, you know, they were built for everybody, even before cars. And now with cars, you know, we've really handed over streets and roads to people who, who can afford to drive a car, who choose to drive a car. And we often fail to accommodate everyone else. And so we know how to do this correctly. And here's a street where we're accommodating vehicles, but we're also accommodating everyone else that's gonna use this street. And even though we know how to build right, a lot of roads still end up like this horrifying intersection that I can't imagine anyone wanting to spend any more time in than they had to, no matter whether, you know, you're in a car or you're trying to cross one of these incredibly long crosswalks. And plenty of roads end up like West Main Road. This is a middle town. You know, I mean, you take a look at that sidewalk and you can see immediately why for someone in a wheelchair, even with a stroller or something, it's essentially unpassable. So yeah, great. You hit the checkbox. There's a sidewalk, but this is not a complete street. And here, this might look a bit more familiar. You know, this isn't a complete street either. We can see a couple of crosswalks. We can see some sidewalks kind of off in the distance and on the, on the left here. But navigating this outside of a car is gonna be confusing, challenging, definitely not comfortable and probably not very safe. And, you know, here's a good example of, this is just a Google Street View. This is just whatever was, whatever day and time, this is the Google kind of truck was passing by. And we can see, you know, a younger person walking here on Sprague Street with no, you know, no accommodations whatsoever, just having to walk, I assume on people's yards. And you can see there's kind of a gravel path just from how well-worn this is. That's called a desire line from people, basically marking where there ought to be a crosswalk. Or I mean, I'm sorry, a sidewalk. So I would say this is certainly not a complete street either. It's not safe, comfortable or probably convenient. And I want to just have a quick note on, on transit stops as well. You know, Portsmouth is blessed really with the 60, hitting both East and West Main Road pretty rapidly. I think the 60 is also one of the latest running bus routes in the state. And if someone that doesn't have a car, I rely on Riptide all the time to get anywhere. And, you know, bad bus stops look like this, where you can tell you're not prioritized. And once you get off, you're not feeling safe or comfortable at all. There's a good likelihood that you'll get hit by, by a vehicle. And just a, you know, you can see on the right there, I kind of circled, this is, I think this is east, is this east Maine or west? This is west Maine, I think. I was heading to Sydney, Providence, or I'm sorry, Sydney, Portsmouth, which is just down the way here, and I had to get off at this bus stop. down the way here, and I had to get off at this bus stop. And there's a school right there, I believe. And, you know, you can tell that walking this doesn't look too terribly different from that last picture. And I know this is a state-owned road. But again, this stuff certainly is not, transit users and pedestrians are not accommodated at all on this, on this road. And it's a real shame because I would love to visit Portsmouth more, but that's the only way I can get down there. And, you know, this doesn't make me want to come visit, unfortunately. And there's plenty of people like me too, who would love to come visit Portsmouth more often, but just don't feel safe doing so right now. And I'm lucky enough to be able to walk on two feet, but again, someone in a wheelchair on, on a road like that might have this situation where they're not able to get up on the sidewalk if there is one. And so I think, again, the baseline to me on a complete street is being able to accommodate folks in, in wheelchairs or with walkers. Just a really quick, this is really just giving the surface of the benefits of complete streets. And this is all, you know, proven by, by studies and metrics and all sorts of communities around the country. I'll let you mostly just read this if, if you like, but it really hits on, you know, health, being able to walk or bike, equity, accommodating folks that don't own a car like me, or can't drive, maybe they're older, maybe they're younger. And there's a myriad of, of economic benefits as well. One of the biggest ones, I think, that's probably valuable for Portsmouth, being that home values tend to skyrocket in places where, you know, they're more walkable or bikeable. And, you know, again, there's, there's a myriad of benefits here, this is a shortlist, but for the sake of time, I'll, I'll continue on. So how do we do this? What does this look like? What does a complete street look like in practice? So there's a kind of a, this is the good news really, is, is it's not nearly as expensive or doesn't need to be as expensive as you might think. On the left, you see, this is Fountain Street in Providence. And this was the state's very first protected bike lane. And this is like right when it was built, I think. And as you can see, it's really, they were repaving the street anyway, and they decided to arrange it differently with paint and eventually with, with plastic, with the vertical ballers that you see there that you can take out if you need to plow in the winter, if you don't have a smaller plow to fit in the bike lane. And so it's, you know, it's pretty, they just did it with just paint and plastic. And now there's a safe route for people to bike, completely separated from traffic. In the middle here, you're seeing one version of a road diet, and I know this has been a hot topic for you all in Portsmouth with East and West Main Road. And so this is basically taking four lanes of traffic, making it two lanes with the left turn lane there in the middle. And that creates, as you can see, two very short crossing distances for pedestrians with, with a refuge island there in the middle to, to wait for, you know, a break in traffic. So it's far, far safer. And I would say with probably enhanced lighting, it would be even safer than it is in that photo. And on the right, you're seeing, again, just paint and plastic, this is just sort of an experiment that one community did to tighten up the turn radius on every corner of this intersection. And what that does is essentially force cars to slow down when they're turning, which is safer and causes drivers to be more alert, makes the crossing distance shorter for pedestrians, and even kind of creates a little bit of extra public space, which is kind of lovely and obviously fun colors and stuff. There we go. So just some more quick examples of that type of stuff. On the left, you're seeing, this is in Connecticut, very small town in Connecticut, where they paid a consultant to show up and just test out, you know, what would it look like? What would it operate like if we had a two-way bike lane on this road? It's kind of like, you know, operates like the East Bay bike path, sort of, just in one lane of, you know, street space. And so he came with just green mats, some chalk spray to get that bike lane symbol down and some cones. And not for a very long stretch of the road, but they publicized this, so people came out on their bikes to test it out. And he had a little stand and he just sort of surveyed people, you know, how do you like this? What would you, you know, would you use this frequently, that kind of thing? And doing traffic counts and stuff the whole day. So, so you're basically testing out an idea before you're committing a lot of money to it, or even real paint. And, you know, again, it's just easy kind of ways to test and evaluate before you commit anything. In the middle there, it's another town in Connecticut, and that's actually me helping with this project, just activating an alleyway and turning it into more of a plaza. And again, it's just chalk and some games and lights and plants and stuff. And we just surveyed people just for one day and tested that out for that town. And on the right, you're seeing, you know, kind of another extension of, you know, pedestrian and bicycle space, which is some vertical separation. And you can put that up and take that down in, in a day. So these are all ways to sort of, this is all to say, these are ways to test out how a street would, would function with various levels of sort of complete streets, infrastructure, before committing any real money to it at all, or any permanent change. And this is a really quick shot, this is on Broadway in Newport, if you're familiar. This is, I think, one of the best examples of complete streets that we have in Rhode Island, relatively recently done. And they've really turned this into like a haven for all these small businesses that are up and down this street. But this, this shot in particular contains a lot of elements of complete streets that I think are worth highlighting. We have, of course, a crosswalk, we have a curb cut with the kind of warning strip for folks who are visually impaired. Those bollards are excellent vertical protection from vehicles, and they also have some lighting on them. We have seating, we have trash, we have trees, we have bike parking. And as you can see, basically, this kind of bulb, this kind of curb bump out turns into basically a small plaza, which is pretty awesome. So these are just sort of all the different tools in the toolkit of like physical stuff that we could add to our streets if we wanted to. But Portsmouth isn't Newport, Portsmouth isn't Providence. And so this can be probably a different set of tool, you know, tools for Portsmouth to, to look at with complete streets. And that's a good thing. You know, Portsmouth is unique and every community is unique, so they're not going to look the same. Like Gary said, we wouldn't look at, you know, an ordinance from New York City, we would look at an ordinance from somewhere small to borrow from. So this is, this is a, a tool, a tactic that is kind of new in the US, but it's being tried out around the country and right here in New England and, and New Hampshire, called an advisory shoulder. You can kind of picture what the street would look like without the, the paint, the dashed lines there. And you can imagine driving down this road, you'd probably kind of hover in the middle a little bit in your car until another car approached, then you might kind of just navigate around each other, you know, kind of defaults into where the lanes would normally be, and then probably go back to, you know, as you were. So what this does is still accommodate that practice, but it kind of designates, you know, the sides of the, of the road are accommodated, they're, they're a shoulder, basically. They're accommodating these two children walking, they might accommodate a bicycle, whatever. And so it kind of creates some designated space for active transportation users until there's cars. And it basically forces people to just, you know, negotiate and it's, it's pretty intuitive really, because they're dashed lines, it's obviously you can cross over them. But it's also obvious that that space on the side aren't for vehicles because it's way too narrow and it looks more like a shoulder. So this is one tactic, so far so good, as far as, you know, the results of these projects in the US. And here's just an example of, you know, I think a road that would be sort of a similar, could be a similar project. And I apologize, I misspelled Headley there on the bottom, I meant to fix it and I totally didn't. But I think this would, you know, could easily transform into something like this, something to consider. And again, it's just paint, it's simply just some paint, and it really transforms it into a complete street, I think. And here, this is very familiar, this is an actual paved shoulder, this is in Montpelier, Vermont. And you can see that there's folks jogging on that paved shoulder because they feel comfortable doing so. And you can also see it's very, you know, flat and relatively wide, so they have a decent amount of space. And, you know, Boyd's Lane, I think, already kind of has this, but it, you know, the, if you just look on the right, the shoulder sort of tapers off down there in the distance. And it's not nearly as even as that last example from Montpelier. So if this was done with purpose, it would, it would maybe have those nice shoulders for folks that might want to walk or bike this, this route. And, you know, just to kind of bring back to Sprague Street, this is, again, just from Google Street View, and this is a kid walking home from school, I assume, or to school. And he's right, he's right in the street itself. And we just, we know on instinct that this isn't really okay, that this, we can do better than this, we know how to do better than this, we know that we should do better than this, and, you know, we just haven't. And that's really, I think, a shame. So again, a complete street, with all those examples, a complete street is simply one that safely, comfortably and conveniently accommodates those who use it. And again, it's going to look different on different streets in different communities. So you are, are looking at an ordinance, I'll skim this, I don't think you really need to know this stuff, I think you already do know this. An ordinance is going to be the strongest sort of way to manifest a complete streets policy. It's permanent, stays put, it's much stronger than a resolution, and it's kind of, it's binding. And the language itself, again, is just iterating a philosophy, but it is binding to at least put that into practice. The, the, the process of just think, of making sure that you are, you know, like Gary was saying, you know, within limits, within exceptions, treating every project as a complete streets project. So kind of a, it's kind of not exactly tiered, but this is the three different ways that this could manifest. Right now, we're again, we're looking at ordinance, and this really establishes a process, and that's sort of the important part. Resolution, again, shows support, but does not really require action. And a policy is not binding, it does establish kind of cross-departmental engagement and, and is a little bit stronger, I think, than a resolution, but again, really doesn't guarantee any significant results at all. So I think an ordinance is the best way to go if you're really serious about this. Excuse me. So I think the one thing to think about, and I, I did suggest to put this sort of thing in the language of the ordinance, which, you know, there are some different changes that I recommended that I think are coming. So the version that you just looked at is probably going to look a little different the next time around, I would, I would guess. But as to establish sort of a small group, a working group, that would, you know, basically serve as the function to like check off the, the checkboxes of, yes, this is, you know, we're, we are making this project a complete street to the best of our ability, within our budget, within the space of the road, within who actually, you know, does use this road or, or could use this road, that sort of thing. So it really just establishes a process, and it can be, that group can look like a variety of different things. I think a complete streets committee might be the best fit, which might include, you know, someone from the planning board, it might include a town counselor, some from DPW, maybe fire and, and police, you know, whatever you guys feel, or everyone feels would be the right membership. So that's just something to think about with that sort of process and the systemizing all of this. And again, like, just to kind of hone in on this a little bit, what Gary mentioned already, is that there is a state law. There is a state law about complete streets. You know, RIDE doesn't, I don't think adhere to it as often as they should. I think we all know the challenges sometimes of, of dealing with a state entity like RIDE. But to my understanding, working some language into the ordinance or the policy that, that kind of tries to hold RIDE's speech to the fire about their own law is another, you know, it's, it's a useful tool, it's a useful route to go to, to work with RIDE on their streets that are, that are in Portsmouth, and it was quite a lot. And one town in Madison, in, I'm sorry, in Connecticut, called Madison, found, I think, good language to do that, and I recommended this sort of language be in the policy as well, which is basically to say, if you look on the, the second highlighted bit of text there, you know, they have a, they have a state complete streets policy there as well. So they say, you know, it shall be applied to all planning, design, construction, and major maintenance within state-controlled right-of-ways within their town limits. So I think that's sort of a, a nice way to promise to work with the state in a way that, you know, brings up their own responsibilities in your, in your jurisdiction. So again, just a kind of closing sentiment here is that it's, it's a philosophy and a flexible process. It doesn't mean there's going to be a sidewalk on every street and road in Portsmouth, it doesn't mean that every road needs them, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't necessarily mean much of anything other than you're going to establish a process that sticks to this philosophy of accommodating everybody safely, comfortably and conveniently. So that's, that's my presentation. I think I sped it up as much as I could, so I thank you for your time.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Wilson.
I didn't know if you knew this, but there was a project in Wakefield called Old Tower Road. I did a final inspection today, and basically that was a half a mile road, it was, it cost 3.9 million. And what happened is I found out, which was kind of interesting, the, the, the original project was half of the cost. But when the DOT went and talked to people who lived on that road, the businesses, the businesses came up with a list of what they wanted, which the DOT included. And the stuff that was included in Wakefield on Old Tower Road were bicycle lanes, automobile lanes, paved shoulders, street trees, landscaping, planting strips, curbs, accessible curb ramps, bump outs, crosswalks, refuge islands for pedestrians, traffic signals, including the countdown, accessible signal signage, street furniture.
Losing you Kate.
Pardon?
Up.
I'm sorry?
We're losing you, speak up.
Oh, I'm sorry. But under the complete street infrastructure, they just included, and that project just finalized. So if you want to see a good example of a complete street, Wakefield has one, and it's Old Tower Road.
Great, thank you for that.
Anybody else have some questions? I do. You guys hint at this in here, but I don't see it anywhere, and that's ADA compliance. Talk about wheelchairs, but you don't talk about what standard is going to be applied. Why is that?
Is that, is that for me or for Gary?
Could be for any, for either of you, I don't care.
Gary, I think that might be more in your jurisdiction since you wrote the ordinance.
Yes, I think that ADA compliance is probably built into the standards which we refer to in, in, in the design section, design standard section of the ordinance. I would be quite surprised if it wasn't.
Can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead Kate.
With the ADA regulations, they keep on improving the standards. First of all, they would have.
Your voice is cutting out.
They would use ADAG, or, which is the latest ADA, which says now you need, instead of three-foot sidewalks, now you have to have four-foot sidewalks. So maybe we should just change some of the language just to say the latest ADA regulations.
I don't have any problem with that because they're always going to change, but it seems to me that we're talking around what is one of the basic things that you're talking about here, which is the ADA, and it's not even mentioned. I would also just make an observation that when you're talking about the roads that fail in, in Portsmouth, East Main Road, West Main Road, Sprague Street, Boyd's Lane, those are all state roads. And there's already a state statute that says that they're supposed to be in compliance. And the other thing is that the suggestion that a municipality can force the state to do something is the cart before the horse. So that might be nice, it might be philosophically great, but from a practical point of view, it just doesn't make any sense. Now, Headley Street's a good idea, and also suggests that you go down and take a look at Park Avenue. Park Avenue was done to be ADA compliant, and that roadway is very accommodating for people who have strollers and wheelchairs, the rotisserie on both sides. I mean, you could, you could, you could actually turn one of those, of course, the residents wouldn't like it, but you could turn one of those side lanes into a bike path quite easily, although it'd be a bike path that almost led to nowhere. And that's, that's another area. And it's a heavenly, it's like, you should see the people walking and biking and that every single day. I have a couple of questions for you, Gary.
Okay.
Page three, top of the page, 3205A. Into the paragraph, it says, "A pleasantly designed roadway."
Okay.
What the heck is that? It isn't pleasant in the eye of the beholder.
Of course it is.
What does it mean?
I don't know, pleasantly designed roadway. "Travel safely and independently, residents and visitors experience a pleasantly designed roadway."
I mean, how do you apply that as a standard?
You don't.
Why is it there if it's going to be in an ordinance?
Because this is a working draft.
No, no, I understand, but I just, I'm just commenting. The next item, B, "And continue such infrastructure beyond the town's borders." How do you do that?
Develops that further the town's green to set forth, above and continue, and continue such infrastructure beyond the town's borders. We, that was a cut and paste, as you, as you can see, 32. It's not a reference to within here, this is a, this is, this is a cut and paste from another ordinance, so I, I think that perhaps this would apply, for example, if we're working with Middletown to, to, as we are, to put in bicycle routes, and so-
I think that's fine, but I don't think it should, we are doing it, we can cooperate with other communities. But I don't know what jurisdiction the town of Portsmouth has in Middletown.
We have-
I don't have cooperation.
I think that's the spirit of this paragraph, is that we will-
Okay. Page four, it would be 4206, oh, I'm sorry, 4205I. It talks about people who would be trained in this. Is that going to include members of the planning board?
It could. It certainly would, it would help to inform you if you, if you're considering amending your subdivision regulations.
Well, it would be helpful, I think, I don't have any objection to that. But it's, it's kind of vague, and it doesn't mention the planning board, project managers, plan reviewers, et cetera. So I think that that needs to be a little bit clearer.
Okay.
And if you look at, oh, let me just sort of pose the question. It struck me because as I was going through all of our matters today, that we've got this big private subdivision that's going in. How would this ordinance affect them? And again, we approved this, so this is a hypothetical.
How would this ordinance affect what's, I'm sorry?
That we approved today, and their roads.
How would this ordinance affect that? Well, it probably wouldn't at this point in time, unless, until you, until we adopt the ordinance, if in fact-
Let's assume we adopted it, how would it affect them? Assuming it's a brand-new petition, same petition. Have an ordinance, it's a new petition. And it's a new petition, but it's essentially what was presented to us and we approved today. How would this ordinance affect that kind of a proposed development?
I think that perhaps that's a question for Attorney Gavin having to do with amending subdivision regulations to come into compliance with this ordinance if it becomes an ordinance.
Yeah, well, here's, here's my fear. My fear is, is as you know, for the last 10 or 15 years, we've been spending a lot of time making roadways more narrow. And we've been doing that because we want to decrease impervious surface, and we don't, we want to decrease the amount of runoff. And it seems to me if we're not adding four, five, six feet by of every development, that's going to increase the costs for every single person who wants to put a development in here, and it's going to increase the impervious surface, the very thing that we've been trying to avoid for the last 10 or 15 years. How do you balance that stuff?
Well, I, I think you rightly played out a, an incompatibility between this and the goals that you've stated.
They stated them, so we know that there's problems, like, go ahead and explain.
Like a showless assistant town planner, I would think this calls to also look at logotag design, how it can be implemented, and different alternatives, or that we can integrate in, that may be more cost-effective than, like-
On impervious walkways or impervious walkways. Can you show me where that's in the service? Yeah, I think the, I think lid and impervious are somewhat, yeah, not mentioned at all.
There was some, some block, so.
Now, there is a section on 06C that says that there has to be a demonstrator lack of need. Factors include, and I'll limit to land use, traffic volume, population density, or lack of community support. But again, I'm just concerned what impact this is going to have on people who are men who have adult family in the future. Now, I'm not necessarily saying that this is a bad idea, but let's, let's be honest about what we're going to be doing. If that's what we intend to do.
In section 40, 342.7, it does list design standards for the LID, annual LID guide.
Okay, so they're, are they going to be included, or are they going to be included?
Those are being included.
And it's just, it's, again, I'm not against this, I just want it to be clear, and let's be honest with everybody, it's what we're doing. I don't have a problem with that, but you, you know what's going to happen with every single person who comes and tries to put a development and say, you know, the last 35 years, you guys haven't required this, now you're making me go through this expense. And if the answer is to that, yes, then, huh, but, but let's, let's do it honestly, let's not sneak something out of the back door. I'm just saying, I'm a very practical person when it comes to this stuff, you know? And it's like, what, what are we doing?
Excuse me, pl- excuse me, Plaid Board Chair?
Who, who's speaking, please?
This is Brian Woodhead, Public Works.
Yes, this is Woodhead.
So maybe I may be able to try to answer some of the questions that you have. I think all the policies in all the complete streets that I've been reading about, especially in Massachusetts, they have, they have pretty good policies in Massachusetts, and they have a pretty good tier system, they have tier one, tier two, and tier three. We have to, how I envision it is, tier one is coming up with a policy, or everyone's calling it an ordinance, but I think it's a policy is a better, better word for it. And then after that, after you have a policy, we have to come up with a division. What is the vision of the town? I mean, we're going to have a bike path going from Mont Hall Bridge all the way down to Second Beach. And then when they, when we have a vision, we have to assess the whole road, our whole roadway network to find out where these complete streets can be implemented in. We can't do every road in the town of Portsmouth, I mean, we can't do a little road that only houses two, two, two houses, you know? It just doesn't, it's not feasible, so after we come up with a policy, then we're going to have to invest some money to, to do our whole, all the roadway network to see where, where all our sidewalks are, where all our crosswalks are, and have a inventory, so we can have a database of it, say, okay, what are our five priority streets that we're going to implement these, these projects on, and it has to, and that's how I see it, it's going to have to implement. We can't do it on every road, and I understand that in this ordinance, it says we're going to do it on every road, and I think we're going to do a little bit of wording and changing some of these words in this ordinance, just so it doesn't confuse everyone that says we're going to do it on every road, so that's just my couple of points I wanted to bring to you.
I have a problem with what you just said. But that's not what, that's not what the proposal, it could be added, I suppose, and drafted in there, but I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with the whole thing, I just think that it has to be a little bit more honest about what it's doing, and where it's going to.
Hey, whatever, it's like snowfall and seas, and whatever, it has to be clear.
You're just going to pay for that, and then you'll be responsible for it.
Mr. Chair, Seth Palat, could I make a few comments?
Sure, of course.
So my first comment, I think the action-forcing language of 34202, where it says "shall," right? So that basically, does that basically make the town, anytime they, I know we talked about repaving, re-paving, but, hey, so now, if the town goes and repaves a road, we have to say, are we adding sidewalks here, are we adding bike lanes here, all that?
That's the way I understand it.
So, okay, that's fine. Now, back to the other question about how would that impact the new development? Now, my opinion on that is, I don't think it necessarily would impact the development, because, I mean, that's not a lot, that's not going to be, there's 20 houses in that subdivision, there's not going to be a lot of vehicular traffic there, so for a complete street, maybe you don't need a sidewalk there. I mean, I personally live off of Middle Road in a small subdivision, and the, the side streets are fine. You can walk up and down the streets, it's when you get onto Middle Road, that's when you get all the cut-through traffic and the 40 mile an hour, you know, tractor-trailer trucks and motorcycles going 65, and, I mean, anybody that walks or, or drives, or bicycles on that road, on Middle Road, is you're taking your life in your own hands, I think.
There's a lot of our roads that are like that. But as, as we do more things like we're doing in this development, where we're connecting one development to another development to another development, you're going to get increased interior traffic off those main roads. And so you may be right that it doesn't become an issue, but the other side of the coin is it may.
But I, I think the, the, the nice thing about this language that Gary has written is that it kind of gives us an out, and it gives us a way to evaluate that and kind of use, you know, apply a little common sense and say, well, does this necessarily need to, like you said, a street, somebody said a street with two houses on it, obviously, right? We don't need to spend the money on a sidewalk for that. But if it's a cut-through, it goes to like a main road where there are stores and a lot of pedestrian traffic, you know, as, as happens on along East and West Main Road, maybe, maybe you do need a sidewalk there, I, I mean, obviously, it's a case-by-case thing.
Common sense is, it's not very common. No, no, I'm just, it's not very common. So to me, I would start off a little cynical on this, and to the maximum extent possible, I look at the exceptions. In our road infrastructure, I mean, you could say 90% of what DPW is going to do and manage, you're constrained by right-of-way, or, you know, you're just doing that because of budgets or otherwise, you're constrained by geometry, all you're doing is a repaving job, you're not touching those things. So you're really hard to follow, the right-of-way is pretty expensive, right?
But I think that's the whole point of this ordinance, is now we're going to force the town to look at, say, hey, you're going to repave Middle Road, well, why don't we add a sidewalk on the side, or we're going to do Sprague Road, or whatever, or Boyd's Lane, if you're, I mean, I know that's a town road, I mean, a state road. I mean, I think we need to have the language in there that says, we at least have to look at it, and if it's not feasible for whatever reason, there's an out there, but, you know, having a policy-
Are you the one speaking?
Sorry, it's still Seth, sorry.
Just want to make sure the record's clear.
I have, I have a suggestion, or I have an opinion about this, if I may. This is Gary. I, I think a very small change to this can have a very big effect, and that is, if we rewrite the sentence in 34202, "Complete Streets Policy", "It is the policy of the town of Portsmouth that the Department of Public Works shall, to the maximum extent possible, consider incorporating complete streets, infrastructure into all municipal roadways, and projects, et cetera, et cetera." By doing that, it, 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 it'll, it gives us, it gives us time to do a, a number of things. One is to prioritize our network of roads to see where it is that we want to do this kind of stuff. Number two, it allows the planning board, you asked about affecting, how this affects the, the planning board's subdivision regs, or how it affects the subdivisions that are being developed. It gives us, it gives you the opportunity to consider in your approval process, process of whether these complete streets, infrastructure is necessary in, in the plans that are being provided to, presented to you. It allows for the kind of testing and evaluation that CJ was talking about. We do a little bit of something with striping and see if it worked, and it allows us to, the time to set up an advisory committee of citizens and so forth, to have input in, in all of this, and then also, lastly, and I think more importantly, most importantly, it gives us time to build consensus on whether this is, 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 is a good thing or not. I, I have always said that, you know, if you, excuse me, that the best way to, to have funding show up for these kinds of projects, and I know Brian is very concerned about having a funding source separate from his paving program to do this sort of thing. If you, if you build, if we build a really strong consensus, consensus on this being a good thing through careful consideration of implementing these infrastructure, that the funding will follow, it will be, you know, we, the funding will follow. So I think simply inserting the word "consider incorporating complete streets, infrastructure" solves a lot of problems and gives us, opens up a lot of opportunities for us to, to actually do this.
Well, to, to me, consider, that's okay, consider, I'm sorry, this writes, if it's a, consider takes out the T, because it makes it optional, but that, that's okay, I mean, I, I did appreciate from that presentation that there are things like advisory shoulders and low-traffic roads that actually are very low-cost options that may be applicable here, and I think it ties back to Mr. Woodhead's, the DPW comment, and it seems like we need to be getting more towards a vision and examples of what it would look like, particularly these private residential, you know, residential developments, and roads and access to and from that, what, what those would look like with examples, so the street examples that you mentioned. Has to get ahead of trying to sell the ordinance. Right. If, Mr. Crosby, if you do form that committee, make sure Mr. Woodhead's on it.
Of course. It will be the town- It will be the town council.
Looking for comments, right?
Pardon me?
You were just looking for comments, Mr. Crosby, right?
That's correct, yes.
Well, you got them. Anything else from us?
No, except some sort of a way for us to compile those comments and get them to the town council.
Now, maybe DeeDee can help us with that at the minutes, if it was a little bit-
Mr. Chair.
How did you do that?
I just, I had some comments, Mr. Chair, if I could say some. Ed Lopes, for the record. So it's certainly a commendable thing for complete streets, and I, I've done a read of this and compared it to some of the projects I've worked on, and Gary, I just had a few suggestions for you to consider as you go through this. One is lighting, I know that's also an important part, and with ADA, we have very, very poor lighting on all the side streets that we have here, especially now that folks are walking more than ever, and the lighting is, is very substandard. I do know that in Massachusetts, many subdivisions require the subdivision builder to, to incorporate lighting that's actually paid for and maintained by the homeowners association, and that also is incorporated with the sidewalks and the street trees, et cetera. I think I heard Mr. Woodhead talk about maintenance, and one of the things I was concerned with was when you start installing sidewalks in the public right-of-way, who is responsible for the snow and ice removal and the long-term maintenance of those, of those sidewalks? I know in Newport, it is quite an issue, I'd hate to see the same thing happen here in, in Portsmouth. And I know Mr. Woodhead probably has more than enough to do with the streets that he has currently under his purview. The only other thing that I was interested in was, was ADA, and you touched upon that. Again, very concerned that as we incorporate this, or think about incorporating it, we pay attention to that because we do have an aging population, including myself, so that's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one more comment.
All right, Ms. Wilson.
The state has an adopt-a-spot, which has been successful over the years, where businesses, once they get a, they get to have a sign, but they bring in their own trees or landscaping, and then they maintain it. Could that be added? That if we rigorously try to get people to adopt the spots, so that our maintenance facility won't have to do it?
Do that outside of this ordinance, right?
Well, included in the ordinance? To get adopt-a-spots, you know, people to adopt them?
I don't know. What's your comment on that, Mr. Crosby?
I don't have any comment on that. I can't, I mean, I think that's probably fine adopting a, adopting a spot, but we're not talking about spots here. We're talking about lengths, linear lengths of roadway. And I, I, I don't have any comment, no.
Well, people have adopted roadways, and they pick up the trash along the roadway. They mow the grass, probably even shovel the snow or remove the sand.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda is our monthly status report from Mr. Lizinski. Anything we need to really zero in on here, Leah? It's the pleasure of the board. Is there a second? Is there a second? All right.
We got to go through this rigmarole.
All right. Anybody else have any further discussion on the motion? Okay, let me see. Mr. Sivitz.
Aye.
Mr. Harding.
Aye.
Mr. Lopes.
Aye.
Garceau.
Aye.
Mr. Pilati.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye. That concludes our business for today. Anybody want to make a motion? Is there a second? We all voted in favor of that one, Dee.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.